Welcome everyone to our public hearing on Rest Haven Memorial Park Metro Plan Amendment and Zone Change. Those wishing to speak during this public hearing should have already submitted a completed request to speak form to the information desk. Do any councilors need to close any conflicts of interest or ex parte contacts? See anyone? Okay. Assistant City Manager, would you please introduce the topic?
Hi, I'm going to just go ahead and pass this to Heather O'Donnell and she's going to give a brief presentation to disorient you and the rest of the audience that's speaking.
Good evening. Tonight's public hearing is on a privately initiated site-specific request for a Metro Plan Amendment and Zone Change for the Rest Haven Memorial Park property located at 3,900 Willamette Street. The proposal would change the land use plan designation and the zoning of the entire property to low-density residential. City file members are MA 15-1 and Z 15-1. The discussion about future development on this site has been ongoing for several years. As you may recall, in 2012, the city was considering changing the land use designation and zoning of the property to low-density residential. However, at that time, the property owner ended up withdrawing the property from that consideration, and that was the Envision Eugene Residential Redesignation process. The applications that are in front of you now are now by the property owner and are for the same request, to redesignate and rezone the entire property to low-density residential. The property is currently designated parks and open space, as shown on the maps in the packet, and we did blow up this map over here because it was a little bit tricky about the zoning. It's actually split-zoned, and so the portion north of 40th that you're seeing in blue is public land, and that's generally where the cemetery development is, and then south of 40th is generally undeveloped, and that is already zoned R1 low-density residential. Public notice for the applications was completed according to the zoning code requirements. We also did some additional communication outside of the formal process to try to keep those folks that have been involved in the current applications informed as the process continues. Testimony that was received during the Planning Commission process is available in a binder along with the entire record at the city manager's office. Copies of the testimony received since notice of the council hearing are at your desks, so in front of you. We understand that some folks may want more time to comment. If that request is made tonight, then we can discuss that after the close of the hearing, but before closing the record. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So, given the formalities of tonight's process, I need to read a legal statement regarding how to give your testimony. Testimony presented must be directed toward the approved criteria or other criteria that the speaker believes to apply to the decision. The failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the city council and parties an opportunity to respond will preclude appeal on that issue. The failure to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the council to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. Generally, what this means is that your testimony should address the approval criteria listed in the zoning code, or any other criteria you think applies to the decision. This is because these are the only things that we are allowed to base our approval or denial of the application on. Additionally, only issues that have been raised with enough specificity can be appealed or filed for damages in Circuit Court. Speakers will be called in the following order: those in support of the proposed, beginning with the applicant; those with a neutral position; and those opposed to the proposal. When you come to the podium, please give your name, city of residence, and your ward, if known. You will have three minutes to comment. The timer and lights on the podium indicate the time you have to speak. The red light indicates the end of three minutes. Now opening the public hearing, first up is the applicant.
Mayor and councilors, Bill Close, on behalf of the applicant, 375 West Fourth Avenue, Suite 204 in Eugene. We appreciate having a positive Planning Commission recommendation and a positive staff report, and beyond that, I'd like to say I have nothing more to say tonight. I understand the record's going to be left open, and that's great.
Okay.
We're available for questions, of course.
So I have you, Bill, signed up for those in support, but this covers that as well.
My comments, saying I'm going to say nothing, stand for all the folks behind me or on the applicant's team, so that's it for the applicant.
Okay, thank you very much. So next up is those with a neutral position. We have one of those, that's Barbara Cookson. Barbara? You can introduce yourself, please.
Barbara Cookson, and I live out Lorraine Highway. I'm coming from a little bit different point of view. I have grandparents, and aunt, and my parents, all interned at Rest Haven. I was up there just yesterday. It was my mother's seventh anniversary of her death, and for seven years, I have been asking off and on for a portion, probably four blocks, of the road to be repaired, more maintenance. There wasn't even enough watering, that some of the new trees they put in have died, and I feel that before any other projects are contemplated, that he has a moral and ethical responsibility to take care of what he has already said that he would do. He's had the money to clear that land, have it shaped up. He's building a new building, but the cemetery itself is just not being looked after in a timely fashion. And I don't know if it's appropriate for this to be considered, but I would really appreciate it if you did. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up are those who are opposed, and we have four of those. First up is Cindy Allen, followed by Robert Milks.
Cindy Allen, Southeast Eugene. I was recently at Blue River, and there was little water in the reservoir. Until we know what we're facing with the drought, I think we should proceed slowly with non-mandated population growth. We hear about infill, but until a few days ago, the farmlands of Seve Loop were also trying to be rezoned. Our area seems to have been hit with rezoning fever. I've spoken to several who attended the Envision Eugene programs, and no one had any idea of the massive changes planned. There is to be a trial restriping for bikes on Willamette, yet rezoning of Rest Haven Memorial Park and the special Willamette rezoning proposed for 500 properties has the potential of dramatically increasing the population of South Eugene. There are only two main streets, Willamette, a very hilly area, and Hilliard. There's also a large senior and disabled population at Cascade Manor. This is already a very busy traffic area, and during peak hours, it's difficult and even dangerous to exit the Woodfield Shopping Center, where Market of Choice is located. How are emergency vehicles such as ambulances and fire trucks to navigate a bottleneck of traffic? I think the police and the fire department should be part of any rezoning. I and others have serious concerns for safety with the population proposed. There are vague concepts given in the rezoning plans, but no studies, traffic or parking, increases to schools, city services, loss of property value to residents. The MUPTI program with tax breaks for multi-story buildings is a Pandora's Box of potential problems. If the capstone is supposed to be the new look proposed for Eugene, and seven-story buildings on Portland Street right next to single-family homes, and proposed population growth without studies and infrastructure, I can only hope that you, our elected officials in the community, will question that too much is happening too fast. Thank you.
Next up is Robert Milks, followed by Cindy. It looks like it's either Stewart or Stenard. Robert?
I live at 388 Delwood Drive, Eugene, Oregon 97405. I am chairman of the board of the Treehouse PUD Homeowners Association, and I'm the Treehouse PUD Homeowners Association liaison to the Southwest Hills Neighborhood Association. However, at this particular time, given the very short and questionable announcement for this public hearing, I am only here as an individual. In regards to the mayor's statement about dealing with specific criteria, I would like to speak to the criteria, but in the notification of this meeting, it says that appropriate criteria be found in EC 9.7735 and 9.8865. However, as I pointed out at the Eugene Planning Commission hearing on July 14th, that 9.7735 is irrelevant, is actually 9.7730. So therefore, I can't bring that up again, apparently, although I do think that these notifications that come out are incorrect, they continue to be incorrect, in the notification for this particular public meeting that I received one hour before the deadline for submittal of a written testimony last Monday. It even says, "You can go to our website to download a copy of materials." If you go to that site, it's sorry, this entry is not good. Now to get to my prepared statement tonight. Notification for this Rest Haven Memorial Park public hearing, and I'm going to refer to Rest Haven Memorial Park as Rest Haven, I provided written testimony and oral testimony. I hope you take a look at that, at the Eugene Planning Commission's public hearing for a Metro Plan Amendment and Zone Change for Rest Haven on July 14th, 2015. I would have provided written testimony for the public hearing had I not received notification of this hearing, as I said a minute ago, approximately one hour before the deadline. Later on that day, I alerted board members of the South Hills Neighborhood Association about the public hearing. They were surprised to learn of this public hearing. Then from September 18th until the 21st, I talked to many homeowners who have homes immediately adjacent to or are located closer...
Sorry, time's up.
Okay, I have some minutes, I hope you read it.
Thank you. Cindy Stenard or Stewart, just next, Cindy? Followed by Glenn Campbell.
My name is Cindy Stenard, and I live in the South Hills of Eugene. I'd like to continue with the statement that Bob was reading. From September 18th until September...
Speak right into the mic, Representative.
From September 18th until September 21st, I talked to many homeowners who have homes immediately adjacent to or are located closer to the Rest Haven property than my home, and they told me they had not received any notification of this public hearing. I am one of those people. Therefore, it would not surprise me that you, mayor, and Eugene City Council have received little or no written testimony for this public hearing. I am greatly concerned with the city of Eugene's notification process for this and other land use issues in Eugene. My major concern about the Metro Plan Amendment and Zone Change is Rest Haven is being treated by the city of Eugene as if it were simply a privately-owned parcel of land in the South Hills of Eugene. I believe the statement is wrong. For whatever reasons, Rest Haven has been designated parks and open spaces and public lands for decades. I believe this makes Rest Haven a special area in South Eugene. Furthermore, I do not believe the issue of amending the Metro Plan and rezoning Rest Haven should be decided by just the city and the property owner, with only limited input from an extremely small number of South Eugene residents who happen to live within the arbitrary 100 to 500 feet from the Rest Haven property lines. I believe the decision-making process should be inclusive of residents in a much greater area in South Eugene who heavily use Rest Haven as a park and open spaces. If you approve the Metro Plan Amendment and Zone Change for Rest Haven, I am concerned that the residents of South Eugene will totally lose a parks and open space in the area. The Eugene Planning Commission expressed a concern at their public hearing that such an area was needed in the vicinity of Rest Haven. The commission even asked the Rest Haven owner at the hearing if he would be willing to sell some of the Rest Haven property to the city to be used to create a park in July 14th, 2015. If you approve the Metro Plan Amendment and Zone Change for Rest Haven, I am concerned residential development of Rest Haven will have a negative impact on the South Willamette Special Area Zone. The Eugene Planning Commission expressed this concern as well at their public hearing on July 14th, 2015. Please schedule a new public hearing after extending the time for written testimony to be submitted by the South Eugene residents and South Eugene neighborhood associations and organizations. I'm one of the people that uses...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Glenn Campbell is next.
Yeah, my name's Glenn Campbell. I've lived at 4103 Brayburn, which abuts the current property that we're talking about, for 41 years. During that time, I've had a chance to meet Chuck Wiper, a wonderful Rotarian, I'm a fellow Rotarian. And, of course, the thrust of rotary is service above self, and I've seen that property dramatically change under stewardship of his son, from cutting the trees down to having a disagreement with our property line. When we had to buy the Denzmore Road from the city of Eugene, they came up with a $44,000 property cost to about 20 of us homeowners, I being one of them, so we kicked in about $2,200 per property. That time, Mr. Wiper agreed to vacate, if we paid the vacation order, that he would not, he would relieve the fences where they were set up by Breeden. So anyway, my observation, simply as a resident of the property, and to see the change dramatically in the issue of what's going on right now, really is kind of stunning. I only knew about this from a note in my mailbox on Saturday, I was gone for the week, and that's why I'm here. I'm not prepared, other than give you a global position, and that is, I'm against this dramatic change, and certainly the notification was very, very short-sighted. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is the applicant's rebuttal, if there is any.
Ma'am.
All right, thank you. At this time, we're going to close the public hearing, and we're going to discuss whether the record will be closed at this time. Anybody have any...
Any questions?
Any questions? Anything?
A question.
Okay. I see that, Councilor Clark, anybody else? Councilor Zelenka?
Senator Taylor.
I bet he was...
Councilor Taylor?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, Councilor Taylor, I want you to go first.
Thank you. I want to keep the public record open. Do I need a motion for that? Do that affect...
He's got one here.
Okay. Okay. And my question is, how were they permitted to cut all the trees? Do we have any restrictions on... I thought there were only supposed to be five trees a year people could cut.
The property is currently subject to a conditional use permit for the cemetery use, and so as part of that, there is a tree removal permit. There was some tree removal activity, I'm not remembering off the top of my head when that was. The staff went out and visited to see if it was in compliance with the conditional use permit, and we didn't find any error there. So when you have a land use application, we do review things like tree removal, and it gets kind of wrapped into the land use application. So they do have a conditional use permit that allows tree removal, more than the five per year, which is the normal.
That points out the need to do something about our tree origins. Thank you.
Councilor Clark?
Thank you, mayor. My question is for Ms. Deputy City Attorney. What are our, as an organization, what are our legal notification requirements and obligations?
Well, I can speak to that, but I think Heather would actually be, for this particular application, she can talk to you.
Thank you.
So for the first notice for the Planning Commission hearing, it does go, the notice goes out to everyone within, I think it's 500 feet, because it's a Metro Plan and a Zone Change. We have different distances for each type of land use application, so it goes to everyone within, I think it's 500 feet, and I think it's 20 days before the hearing. And then when we get to this stage in the process, the hearing, or the notice that goes out is shorter, it's 10 days before the hearing, and it goes out to everyone that submitted written testimony or gave testimony at the Planning Commission process.
But it doesn't go to all affected potential area?
Correct. And so that's why we typically try to do some sort of email to other folks that have been involved in the process, to let them know because of that kind of truncated notice.
So it's an email to interested parties, and it's what then, in the first place, the 500-foot before the Planning Commission, and the secondary to those who've testified is by U.S. mail?
The notice for both public hearings are by U.S. mail. The email that I was mentioning is not required by code, it's something that we do because we're trying to reach more folks.
Is the notification requirement city code or state law?
It is in the city code, but I think there is a requirement in state law that we have some sort of notification requirement, but I don't know that it's specific to the amount of time. We do more than state law requires.
But if we, as council, wanted to do more than that, more than his current practice, are we at liberty to do so by ordinance?
Yeah, and amend your code.
Is there any requirement in state law about the receipt of notification? Or is it just simply that we made a good faith effort to put a postcard into the mail?
I'm not aware of any receipt required requirement in state law. It's the kind of the general mailbox rule. If it gets put in the mail, there's a presumption of receipt. When it says return receipt required, it's specific to that, and I'm not aware for this type of modification there.
And the 500-foot rule is 500 feet from what specifically? The exterior edge of the property line, or what is it?
Correct. It would be from the boundary of the property. We use the boundary of the tax lot.
Is that distance also subject to our amendment in code?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. And by the way, to the best of your knowledge, all of those things did occur in both these cases?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilor Zelenka?
Yeah, similar question about the notice requirements, but you answered that. I will note that this keeps coming up about notice. I think we need to review our land use notice requirements and process, and there needs to be, with that said, there needs to keep into consideration a balance between timing and cost and appropriate notice. And somebody suggested we should mail out, for instance, on the South Willamette, something to every person in the city, which I think would cost about $35,000 each time we did it, and we obviously don't have that, nor do we have the capability to knock on people's doors in the area. So, but I think we need to discuss this issue because it keeps coming up. I know it's hard to keep track of everything that's going on, and if you've got soccer practice, and violin lessons, and doctor appointments, and shopping, and work, and this and that, it's hard to make sure everything around you is getting the attention maybe that it deserves. So, a question about conflict between the Metro Plan designation and zoning. When there's a conflict, the Metro Plan designation rules, correct? So it trumps it?
Well...
And, let me finish my question, then you can answer. And so what does that mean with regard to the zoning? Does that mean the zoning then becomes irrelevant, and if the planning, Metro Plan designation is rules?
So, there are places in the city where we have a Metro Plan designation that doesn't match the zoning, and so when a building permit comes in, we're just looking at the zoning. We're not looking at the Metro Plan designation. When something like a subdivision comes in, then we're looking to make sure that the proposal, because it's a land use application, we're looking to make sure that the proposal is consistent with the Metro Plan designation and with the zoning. And so if you had a conflict there, for instance, if you came in with a residential subdivision, and it was zoned industrial, but it was Metro Plan designation low-density residential, we'd want you to do the zone change so that the Metro Plan and the zoning were consistent with each other to do the application. So I'm not sure where you're going, but that's, I wouldn't say that one supersedes the other.
Okay. So if, okay, I get that. And I'm not familiar with how cemetery, how we treat cemeteries, or what the rules are around them, especially with regard to land use, so I have a couple of questions. Let me rattle them off, and then you can answer them. Why was this area zoned parks and open space if it's intended to be a cemetery? And how long have the current owners or family owned this property and with that designation? And then, if the current owners wanted to change the cemetery to some other use, what happens to all the people that are buried there, for instance? Or is there some rule that says they can't do that? I don't know much about cemeteries.
So your first question, why was it designated parks and open space if it was intended to be a cemetery? I think at one point in time, the planning practice was to designate semi-public land that provided an open-space-type quality, and so throughout the city, we have cases like this property, there is a property out on West 11th, the Lane Memorial Gardens that came before you and was redesignated part of it to low-density residential, very similar situation. So anyway, at one point in time, we, planning practice was to designate things like cemeteries and golf courses that provide open space as open space, because that's what the use was that they were in at that time, and the assumed future use. And so when that changes, that's when we start looking at a Metro Plan Amendment.
Are all cemeteries public, open spaces?
No, they're not. We have some cemeteries that are low-density residential designation and are one-zoned, and then we have this one that is kind of the split zoning, but parks and open space designated, so we have kind of a mixture.
Okay.
Your second question, I don't know how long the current property owner has owned the property, and it's been designated as it is.
Yeah, I think his parents owned it, long, many, many years.
Prior, yeah. And then what happens if they want to develop the already-developed portion, the portion... And then what happens if they want to develop the already developed portion, the portion that already has a cemetery on it? What happens? You know, we are mostly looking at local land use laws, and so we're looking at zoning and metro plan designations and refinement plans. There are other state and federal regulations that I'm not familiar with that govern things like cemeteries. So I would think public health would be one thing, and then you'd be looking at other, whatever other state and federal requirements there are around burial sites, but we don't, at the local level, we don't get involved in those issues.
Would it be safe to say that once it's a cemetery, it's pretty much going to stay a cemetery? I don't know of any cemeteries that have turned into-
Yeah, I, I don't know the answer to that, but I can say that there is other regulations that would have to be addressed beyond zoning.
Okay, thanks.
Seems to me like there's a couple things to think about here. One, and Counselor Zelenka talked about, you have a contractual agreement with people about burial space, so that there are contractual obligations that are built into this. Two, it seems to me that different places have different value in terms of open space, so it seems, that does seem to be part of the consideration, evidently was part of the conversation with the Planning Commission as well, the role of that, as, as open space for that part of the community. The other, actually, the only question I have is Mr. Milks, I said he had talked to the Planning Commission about ordinance numbers being incorrect. Was that looked into and corrected, or were, were they not incorrect? Do you have information on that?
Right. Yes, we definitely got that testimony, and the, it was about the approval criteria, and whether or not we had cited the right approval criteria, and so the difference is just that if you, I think he's, so our notice says 9.7735, that is the approval criteria. They have to comply with, for a metro plan amendment, it's 9.7730 is all of the process for a metro plan amendment, so it's about submitting the application, what kind of hearing it goes through, et cetera, and then the approval criteria is what we cited. So we did look into that. I think there's a difference of opinion about that, but we cited the one section that is-
Did staff talk with him personally about that, to make sure he has an understanding of that?
I'm sorry, did we or-
Have you had a personal conversation with him about that?
No, we haven't. That came up as public testimony, and we responded through the Planning Commission.
So if he needs more information, he could talk to you?
Absolutely.
Okay, great. Do you want to put a motion?
Yeah, so typically, so we've been asked to hold the record open, and typically we'd do that for approximately two weeks, but given that some of you are here affiliated with formal organizations that may need to go through a process to send you back with a statement, I'm going to propose a longer period. So move to leave the record open for 21 days to allow anyone to submit new evidence and argument until October 12th, 2015, at 5:00 p.m. Leave the record open for an additional seven days to allow anyone to submit rebuttal evidence and arguments until October 19th, 2015, at 5:00 p.m. And leave the record open for a final 20, excuse me, seven days to allow the applicant to submit rebuttal arguments only until October 26th, 2015, at 5:00 p.m.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Counselor Clark?
Thank you, mayor. I, my reflexive position is to want to support that, because from my point of view, I want the general public to have as much chance to weigh in, as long a period of time as necessary to do so adequately, but in being balanced and fair, I want to ask staff, is there a reason we should not do that based on any, any expectations of the applicant that are legally binding in any way, or any reason we should not leave the record open for that extended period of time?
There are no legal, like, time limits that this would come in conflict, conflict with, and I heard the applicant's representative earlier say that they were okay with the record being left open. I didn't hear any specifics about how long, but-
Thank you.
Counselor Zelenka?
So does all those extra timeframes, we were supposed to have this come back for final scheduled council meeting on October 12th?
It would be November, November 9th is when we would be coming back.
Oh, okay.
For action.
For action.
Yeah.
November 9th. Okay. So the AOS is the 12th. All right.
Okay, I think we're ready to vote on this. All those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five, six. None in opposition, it passes. Any other questions? Ask staff with that. I think we've finished the business of the day. Thank you.